What the easiest mean is if you've got a farm, I think it's fifteen acres or more, you put it in a forest designation. That costs five dollars an acre to do that every ten years. But you have to have a program that the Forest Service improves them. I don't know. I asked that last time and they said it didn't have anything to do with this. I don't know about this. See this word Charlotte?
I'm running up Charlotte.
Okay.
You guys ready?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead and call our mid-month meeting to order. Would all rise to pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America. Please, leaders.
The United States of America. Intolerant for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Should make stand for a moment silence, please. Thank you. Welcome, I'd like everybody out at this point for a meeting. First off, need approval to agenda. Is agenda standing as is?
So move.
Second. For saving discussion, all favor. All right. We have the minutes October twenty. Trust everybody's looked over that. If any kind of motion.
Make a motion that we set the minutes and give the card any right, the right to correct anywhere as it may be.
With motion here second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Public comment time. Looking forward to public comment. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I forget that about three quarters of ten. Red light's on, right? Public comment time. If anyone has anything to say, please come forward. Seeing no movement, we'll close public comment. Move on down to presentation of board. We turn that over to Mr. Bill Jeppli for our grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So can we? Okay. We're gonna pull up our new grants director. If we can get her on here and just let her say hello to you. We're thrilled to have her onboard. Rahel Vizuwork is her name. And she has some great experience, great education. She's already made a good impact in the meetings that we've had. So I did the same thing.
I'm not live either. Sorry about that. She, we've already had probably seven or eight meetings with department heads to talk about opportunities to move forward on seeking out grants for their departments. And we're continuing that process, but we are hoping we will have her on here in just a second. Keep your fingers crossed. No? Okay. We will, we will come back to it.
Okay. We want to move forward, won't wait a minute. Wait and see again.
Why don't we go ahead and move forward?
Okay. Okay. Next, Stacy Preston, please. Director of Social Services.
Good morning.
Morning. Morning.
So I don't know if Lisa will show my PowerPoint, but if not, I think you guys got it. So I'll try to keep it short and sweet. Twenty twenty-four brought several changes to the agency. It was a year of growth and learning. We've grown in size and knowledge throughout the year while facing several challenges that were brought on by Hurricane Helene and increasing difficulty in finding placement for our foster children. The next slide, I think, shows our organizational chart. When we're fully staffed, I have thirty-two staff. Currently, all women. July twenty twenty-four through June of twenty twenty-five, we served two thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine clients, received five thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine phone calls, and traveled ninety-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-six miles. Throughout the year, we did have, these are mandatory agency meetings that were required to have. We had four adult MDP meetings, which these meetings were in collaboration who served the adult population in the county to address abuse, neglect, and financial exploitation. These are held quarterly. We had twelve TPAT meetings. This is a team of social workers. They present cases to a team comprised of community volunteers, guardian of platoons on children in foster care to ensure the needs and well-being of our children and families are being met. They're held monthly. And we had four CCPT meetings, which is a child protection team. It's made up of community representatives who promote a community-wide approach to the problem of child abuse and neglect. And this team would also staff any child fatalities that may have occurred. Social workers, their supervisors, and myself are required to complete twenty hours of continuing education credits each calendar year. During Hurricane Helene, DSS staff operated a shelter for two days to assist local families who had been impacted by the hurricane. Sixteen of my staff members traveled to Ash County to assist with their shelter operations by covering eight-hour shifts so that Ash County DSS staff could take the time to focus on their personal impacts from the disaster. Staff also opened up the conference room at the agency and provided hot meals that had been donated, allowed families to have access to showers, and electricity to charge devices while they were without power. We made grab-and-go bags that were made and distributed as needed. Hurricane Helene also provided state and federal funding programs that were administered by our staff. DSNAP was set up October twenty-first through the twenty-fourth to assist individuals who have suffered a food loss due to the hurricane. A total of one hundred and seventy-four applications were approved, provided benefits to four hundred and forty-eight individuals, and issued one hundred and ten thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars in benefits. This adventure was a group effort, including county maintenance helping to set up, IT to ensure we had access to printers and supplies, as well as county administration who checked on my staff each day. Energy assistance was provided to individuals who were without a heating or cooling source, and the agency issued four thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars in benefits. Adult services funds were allocated to assist individuals who were receiving services through Adult Protective and met the criteria due to impact from Hurricane Helene. We issued three thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars in benefits. Disaster rental assistance issued four thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars in benefits for individuals who were facing a housing crisis due to the hurricane. These next programs are administered by the agency on a daily basis. Child support includes one lead agent supervisor and one agent. They collected a total of five hundred and sixty-three thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-seven cents, established paternity for ninety-nine percent of the cases that required establishment, and they received four thousand six hundred and ninety-eight dollars in incentive funds. The Medicaid unit consists of one supervisor, three adult Medicaid workers, three family and children Medicaid workers, one long-term care cap special assistance case worker, and one non-emergency medical transportation case worker. They processed five hundred and twenty-nine applications, maintained an average of two thousand six hundred and ninety cases monthly, arranged one thousand six hundred and seventeen non-emergency medical trips, and issued eighty-nine thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars in SA benefits. While the Medicaid unit faced staff turnover throughout the year, they worked hard and passed the monthly state report card for ten out of the twelve months and passed the county audit with no findings. Food and nutrition includes one supervisor and four case workers. They processed four hundred and forty-seven applications, issued three million one hundred and one thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars in benefits, processed research and expedited applications timely all twelve months, and met the timeliness for applications ten out of twelve months. Work first, case worker processed twenty applications, issued thirty-three thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars in benefits, processed all research and applications timely throughout the year. Subsidized childcare, which provides assistance with daycare costs, served nineteen new children, maintained an average caseload of fifty-one kids, and issued three hundred eleven thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars in benefits. Program integrity, processed forty reports and saved approximately thirty-two thousand in program benefits due to intentional program violations processed. Our energy programs, which is the Crisis Intervention Program and the Low Income Energy Assistance Program, they processed one hundred and ninety-nine SIP applications, approved one hundred and seventeen of those, issued twenty thousand nineteen dollars in benefits. LEAP issued fifty-five thousand two hundred dollars in benefits and processed all applications in both programs one hundred percent of the time. Child welfare consists of one and a half supervisors. One supervisor also supervises adult social workers. Two investigators, one in-home, and four foster care social workers. They received one hundred and thirty-nine CPS reports, worked one hundred and sixty-six assessments and investigations, served a total of forty-seven in-home cases, and averaged forty-eight children in foster care monthly. Reunification was successful for nineteen children, and we did complete five adoptions. They met the required state target goal of monthly face-to-face foster care visits ninety-seven percent of the time. Adoption assistance issued five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in adoption assistance payments and maintained a monthly caseload of forty-six children. Adult protective services consist of one supervisor and two social workers. They received one hundred and eighty-eight APS reports, worked sixty evaluations, maintained twenty-seven guardianship cases, averaged six monthly accounts, a monthly paid accounts. They met their state goal for timeliness on evaluations for abuse and neglect nine out of twelve months and for exploitation all twelve months. In-home aid services were provided to four clients monthly and a total of three hundred and seventy-five hours of service were provided. This is contracted with the Council on Agent. The APS unit is also responsible for monitoring the adult homes in the county. Presently, the only adult home is the Landings Chestnut Grove. Four visits were made with no violations found. The adult home specialist investigated two complaints, which also resulted in no violations. Additional various stats. Agency completed twenty-four assists for other counties. We completed three requests to other states for ICPC, which is when we're requesting foster children to be placed in another state. We provided those same assists for other states on five cases, spent a total of forty-six nights in the agency with foster children who did not have placement, had one unclaimed body, served seven licensed foster families. We increased security measures at both buildings with improved security system and cameras. We purchased two vehicles, created two foster care bedrooms inside the agency, and we installed a washer and dryer, which is used to wash clothing and bedding, which we're understanding in the office. Expenditures and reimbursements, MAC, which are funds that can be used for individuals and children who meet certain criteria, provided a reimbursement of thirty-two thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars, which is a forty percent increase from the previous year. And this is due to social workers continuing on learning and training so they know when to use those codes. The total expenditures, three million five hundred and forty-two thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars with reimbursements of two million twenty-three dollars, two million twenty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-three dollars, which resulted in a fifty-seven percent reimbursement to the county. Any questions?
Any questions? Great job.
Thank you.
I do have one question. I was curious how you all figured out how to take any vacation time?
Yeah, we don't take any. But it's okay.
Bobby?
On your foster care, I think you had forty-three or something close to that. Has that been running about the same for the last four or five, three or four years?
Well, it's increased some. And this year, we're averaging probably fifty-one, fifty-two a month in there.
I just, you know, another thing, I was looking at the total miles that you travel. I don't know if we have enough tires to go around the world four times.
Yeah.
I think that's something that people don't understand is the amount of hours and the amount of miles that you all have to put in to run the program. And I think we got two vehicles this year. But at this rate of almost a hundred thousand miles, we're gonna have to look at getting them in a rotation of keeping a good vehicles up to date because we can't have them halfway around the world and the car break down. So I think that's something for the budget for next year to be sure that they have enough of good vehicles. And I'm assuming our maintenance department does almost all the maintenance on those vehicles.
Yeah, they do. We're frequent flyers to the maintenance department. But yeah, most of, we do have two vehicles that's pushing two hundred thousand miles. So I've been discussing that with my board for the upcoming budget year.
Good. Dana?
Yes, that's funny that Bobby brought that up because we had that last discussion on our last board meeting. But I just wanted to say that sitting on that board has been a new experience for me. And I just want to thank Stacy and her crew, which is amazing what they do. And as you can see, until you put it on paper, I don't think you all even realize what you do until you get to the end of the year. And it's just pretty incredible what they do. And they are, they make up almost a third of our county employees. And so I just want to thank you and your gang and just keep up a good work.
Thank you.
Explain a little bit of where you guys travel to to see these kids, how far out you reached, just so the people at home will have an idea.
So we do have a couple of kids placed in Rock Hill, South Carolina. We have one in Morris, Tennessee, which is about seven hours one way. And then we've got them Charlotte, Greensboro, Winston, and we have to see those monthly. And then that doesn't count, you know, doctor's appointments that we may have to assist with, other appointments, school visits. So staff's traveling a lot.
So you're in three states?
Yes.
Got kids placed in three states? Big need, big need for foster parents.
Yes. So we're doing a huge promotion right now.
Any other questions?
On the, on the Tennessee trip, I think you said one way is seven, seven hours? Did they get to spend the night before they have to drive back?
So we've given, I've given them that option, but they prefer, they usually go in pairs. And so one will drive, they leave about four in the morning and drive, visit the kid, and then drive back.
At least they have the option for them to stay.
Yes, they do have that option.
Garry's going?
I'm good.
All righty. Thanks, we appreciate you. Appreciate you greatly.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say that these are some of the unsung heroes of this county. And I've had the pleasure of meeting with groups, groups of ten of her people over, you know, over the last couple of months. And her leadership has been really good and strong, and they're like a family. And you can really feel that unity between them. They, they really enjoy what they do. One of the things I was worried about is with all they see, does it get them down? You know, and I'm sure it does, you know, frequently. But you couldn't see that in the spirit of these people when I had those chances to talk with them. And that comes from the leadership. We appreciate you big time.
Thank you. I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Okay, moving on down. Let's see, don't we get into backup? We're ready for the, we're ready for the grant runner. We just want to move on with the meeting. Okay. If you get her, you can let us know. Okay, next up, Steve Mason, TDA update.
Thank you. Just, you got a packet. I do need to make one quick adjustment on that first page. In looking at the fund balance sheet, the financial report, there needs to be adjustment there on the figures that are in that first sentence. And actually, the revenue is fifty-three thousand seven twenty and sixty-eight cents. We had stuck in the actual expense in that line item, but the actual revenue is fifty-three, seven, twenty, sixty-eight, and we should change that figure that's in parentheses of twenty thousand, three, forty-one to twenty-five thousand, six, ninety, and fifty-two cents. That's actually on the financial sheet right that we're coming up to. And you'll see where that, where those adjustments came from. But the reality of it is, is in looking at the numbers, one of the things that I wanted to address off the get-go is that because of the variance of those funds, they were actually due to the adjustments that the auditors made when they reviewed our documents. Abel, do you want to touch on that just a minute and just share that?
With any type of revenue or expense at the end of the fiscal year, if anything is dated June, or if it's revenue for June in this case, things are adjusted back to the fiscal year that they're referenced to. So at the end of fiscal year twenty-five, there was twenty-four thousand, twenty-four thousand, six hundred and six dollars, I believe, is the amount. Twenty-four thousand, six hundred and six dollars and two cents. That was adjusted back to last year for revenue because all the reference is to June. That's from Airbnb's, that is from Allegheny Inn, that's from any vacation rentals that are in the county. So I just wanted to point that out. And Steve and I have, we've had a couple of conversations about this because when you bring up the report for the year, there's nothing in July as revenue. But that's why, because everything was adjusted back to June, because it was referenced to June. And I'll be happy to answer any questions about it.
So when that, when that occurred, basically, that creates a little bit offset in the numbers. But the reality is, if that had, those funds had stayed in, that just put those funds back in June. So if those funds would have stayed in July, we would have been very consistent with what we're currently doing. So we'll continue to monitor that and make sure that if we need to, we'll make any adjustments we can make on the budget based on that. But I think right now, we're on a pretty, pretty good course. So we'll keep an eye on that as we go forward. And that's what that next statement said. Then, then, you know, in relationship to that, when we get to the numbers in just a minute, you'll see kind of what we're talking about as that kind of plays out. But those revenue corrections were made. And so basically, we're about twenty-five thousand dollars behind we were at the same time period last year, but was due to that readjustment. Then the other thing I just want to talk about is wayfinding signage program. It's on a good pace. We actually put out for bid for that. In the first wave of bids, we did not get through bidders. So we put it out for a second bidding process. With that, with that done, we have selected Right Light as the accepted vendor to do the work. They have been given the information, the artwork. So production is in, in process. We will continue to give you guys updates on what, where we're at with that, that program. But the thought process is that we'll look at the opportunity to be able to establish signage and start putting those signs in sometime in the spring. Then as far as the other information that's on there, just once again, want to thank the commissioners for their support of this project. And we'll continue to give you guys information on that on a monthly basis. Also, when you look at, look at just some other projects, I want to thank you for the participation and support for the chamber in relationship to economic development. And that, that piece and where we're headed with that, I think we're in a great position to be able to enhance through all municipalities, the efforts of growth in our county. So I think that's going to be a good position for us to be in going forward. And I look forward to continuing to grow that relationship with the chamber. Also, just stepping down to that last paragraph, efforts have been, we're excited about what ASSE is doing, our local trail association in developing in San Brown. We have given some, some grant monies for the lower development of that. And we're in discussions for the upper development, for mountain biking and hiking trails on the upper side of the park. And we'll be, we'll be discussing that as it goes forward too and being more involved with them as well. Also, in Kraus Park, the skate park, we're involved with that along with Friends of the Blue Ridge, who are a fund holder, and the grants that we're starting to acquire now. And we do want to try to have some conversation too with Grant Lyter to look at the opportunities that we might have going into next year and adding to those funds. We're on a good, good pathway with that, that project as well. And that, that hopefully will be able to start this next year as well. Going into the documents themselves, Exhibit A, well, actually, let's go to the next page, second page there. Just did want to share with you our meeting schedule. And then also, I did want to point out the very last statement on that second page is, y'all are addressing that today later on in the, in the meeting. Shirley Richardson's, her term is expiring. And, but she has also agreed to serve again if that's your wishes. And we've all discussed appointments. Then going to the financial report, as you can see, estimated fund balance of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirteen. Revenues, what we just adjusted at on that front page, fifty-three, seven, twenty. And expenses right now for the, for the quarter were fifty-nine thousand, seventy dollars. That's outstanding, we have outstanding grants of eighty-five thousand dollars. And then you can see the obligation, obligated grants that are just below that, about eighty-five, six, sixteen. Those are still being paid out throughout the year. And I think we did take care of our three percent or our audit expense of that three thousand dollars in our last meeting. So that will be taken out going forward. And then you see our long-term goals. Currently, we have a fund balance of thirty-four thousand, negative thirty-four thousand dollars, but that's due to our obligated expenses that we have mapped out for the rest of the year. As, as we get in different funds throughout, sets throughout the next few months, we should be able to be in a legitimate position there. The rest of the documents in Exhibit B and C and D are all supporting the numbers we've already talked about. But I would put the last one, D. And that gives you the revenue pieces. But also, the very last page of that document just shows you and recognizes that first month in July with no funds in that zero description in July. But you can see, we've been very consistent with additional months in August and September. And I think we're going to see it tracking very strongly that throughout the year. So I think we'll stay pretty close to our budget. Any questions?
Any questions? Anybody? How's, seen any increase, decrease, tax dollars, steady?
Trending has been about, about steady. Now, we have had a little bit of conversation in relationship to the hotel itself. Now, we have had a little bit of conversation in relationship to the hotel itself, and John had, had made a comment that we've seen a little bit of decline, but I think if we consistent with our Airbnbs and those, so I think at the, at the end of the day, we'll probably stay pretty consistent. So we'll continue to monitor that with the other months we have.
That sounds good. Any questions?
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Thanks.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, moving on down, general business. Next up is Mr. Matthew Evans, Division eleven engineer.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, thank, thank you for the focus. The commissioners, thank you. Before I get started, I want to say as a member of the community, I appreciate what you all, the time and dedication that you all give back to our community, so thank you. So here today with Mr. Randall Miles. Randall is our district engineer. I'm the division maintenance engineer for Division eleven. Division eleven encompasses the most north, eight northwest counties in North Carolina. I oversee the maintenance operations. I want to discuss a potential proposed always stop at the intersection of NC eighteen and Sparta bypass or Sparta Parkway, also as it has been referred to. So this is the intersection we're going to discuss.
Garrison, you want to flip one of those switches?
I want to talk about some of the crash history and background before getting into the always stop itself. So from two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and twenty, we had nineteen total crashes. That was including one fatality and four serious injuries. Some safety improvements were identified and completed in December twenty twenty. They included things like enhanced signage, transverse rumble strips, and some oversized flashers. Since then, we've had eight crashes recorded from January twenty twenty-one to February twenty twenty-five, which ends up being a fifty-six percent reduction in frontal impact crashes, and we've had no fatal or serious injuries. So I, I know there've been a lot of talks over the years about a roundabout at this intersection, and I want to talk about some, about some of that today. Our roundabout project was submitted in prioritization seven point oh of the safety transportation improvement program, but it was not selected. It actually scored fairly low compared to other projects selected in that program to be funded. The estimated cost is about four point seven million dollars. And also, we have some environmental impacts in the southwest and southeast quadrants that we're going to have to avoid. So that gets a little bit more complex than the design of the roundabout, and, you know, early indications is if we would do a roundabout, it would have to be a smaller roundabout where tractor and trailer is actually traversed over the center of the roundabout, which is not typical. Most of the time, we have a paved concrete truck apron for roundabouts to, to, for traversing that. I think it has, this project has been submitted again in prioritization eight point oh. That's underway right now. We'll find out. Yeah, I think that they're going through the scoring process. It's about a two-year process to actually come out and see what's, what's going to be included in the future still. But that's working with years twenty twenty-eight through twenty thirty-seven. The first five years is set, so best case scenario, you're, you're looking at twenty thirty-two to twenty thirty-seven. All right, so we start talking about always stops, you know, it's a, it's a new strategy we've been using now for a few years in North Carolina. They're low cost, because they're quick to install, safe, they have minimal mobility impacts at the right intersections. So what are those right intersections? So intersections that have a maximum traffic volume of seventy-five hundred vehicles per day for major and minor approaches, and they have, you know, two-lane and two-lane intersection, basically a four, four-legged intersection. So our volumes right now, as you can see, NC eighteen has the highest traffic volume, about forty-nine hundred cars per day. The other approaches are, are much less, so we feel like this always stop would function extremely well. Ninety percent reduction in fatal and serious injury crashes have also, you know, we've seen that through some safety studies of always stops. I'm going to touch on that a little bit more in the next. So I'm just going to hit some highlights here. So in North Carolina, twenty-one percent of the frontal impact crashes occur in rural areas, but sixty-seven percent of both fatal and serious injury frontal impact crashes are in rural areas. So always stops is one of the strongest solutions to improve safety for rural high-speed intersections. Again, in twenty twenty, NC eighteen magnified the use of this account measure to better influence trade, safety trends. As early twenty, as of early twenty twenty-three, roughly four hundred and fifty always stop conversions have been funded as safety projects in North Carolina. Many projects have been implemented and more are underway across the state. Overall, from three hundred and forty-eight intersections, indicated significant crash reduction with always stops. The total crashes per year went down, had a fifty-five percent reduction. Frontal impact crashes had a sixty-five percent reduction. Injury crashes significantly reduced with always stops. Fatal and class A injuries, which those are your serious injuries, were, had a ninety-two percent reduction. Class B and class C injury crashes, a seventy-two percent reductions. And I think these next two are the most important statistics. Before always stops, there's eighty-one fatal crashes and a hundred and sixty-five class A injuries. After always stops, there are no fatal crashes and eight class A injuries. So seeing a lot of the thicknesses out of, out of always stops. This is going to get a little technical, but I thought it was important to, to show. My numbers up right here. So we had a, a traffic study performed at this intersection to see how it's performing now, how it performs in twenty forty-five without always stop, and how it performs in twenty forty-five with always stop. So the things I want to focus on is the level of service. So you can see there's As and Bs right now. NC eighteen, for a level service A, which makes sense because traffic's free flowing through there. As far as the Parkway, has some level service Bs, given, depending on whether you're in the AM or PM. The AM peak hours is generally seven to nine AM. The afternoon peak hour is four to six PM. So when you see the, the AM and PM, that's the time it's, it's referring to. And also, you see the maximum queue length. So right now, you know, we would expect a queue for Sparta Parkway around seventy feet during the ma- during the busiest time of the day. All right, so then we go to twenty forty-five, and this has a half percent growth rate. This is about always stop. You start seeing more Bs, level service Bs pop up, a little bit more delay time, and we'll, just a little more queuing. And then we'll talk about the always stop scenario. So with always stop, you see we took down to four legs. If we was to move forward with this project, we would go in and construct concrete islands where the turn lanes are at now, so you truly have, you know, four legs coming into the intersection. So with this, the level service A, the NC eighteen southbound is a level service A. Sparta Parkway is an A east, eastbound, like northbound for Sparta Parkway is a B, and then southbound for the Parkway is A. So all this to say is that if an always stop would be implemented, we would see really good mobility with the worst delay at ten point one seconds, which is a level service B. When you start measuring level services, level service B, it starts from ten to twenty seconds, so we're at ten point ones, so we're barely into a V. So it functions really well. And then we would, we would anticipate seeing a maximum queue about a hundred and four feet, which, that's about four cars. The car is about twenty-five feet by the time you consider the car and the distance in front and behind. So some key takeaways. You know, right now, the timeline for roundabout is really undetermined. Roundabout project can still be submitted in the future, and always stop is recommended as it can be implemented quickly and operated with minimal delays, and would like to request a resolution and support for implementation of always stop. I will add this to, you know, we start looking at four point seven million dollars for a roundabout, or less than fifty thousand dollars for always stop, and the functionality is, is really about the same far as moving the traffic through this intersection. Also, I have received some, you know, some public outreach about a traffic signal, so want to talk about that a little bit. It's been looked at in the past, so when we start looking at traffic signals, there's nine different warrants, and typically or generally, we won't, a traffic signal meet two of those non-warrants to, to be considered, but this intersection doesn't meet any of the warrants. So therefore, you know, we will not be able to sell a traffic signal because it's, it's not warranted. And that's all I have, and happy to take any questions.
Bobby?
In your reference to the accidents at, at, at the intersection over the time period, do you know what tickets were issued and the reason for those accidents was it? Do you have those reasons?
So I would not, I do not know if tickets was issued, but I do know that out of the total ten-year period, twenty-three of the accidents was angled crashes, meaning, you know, two vehicles trucked each other. At an angle, you know, basically, you're, you know, like a T-bone or, or it's another glance in the frontal impact. One was an animal collision, one was a head-on collision, one was a left turn from a different roadway, and one was a right turn from a different roadway. So almost every one of them was some type of angled collision at the intersection.
And there was always a ticket issued?
I do not know. We would, I would, I'd be able to get that information, but I don't have it today whether a ticket was issued or not.
The, I just, you know, the people that go through that intersection daily, it's usually a challenge right now with just the stoplight, trying to get people to either turn, or they don't know if it's their turn to go or not. You know, anything we can do for the safety is good. I just don't know if a four-way stop is going to create more confusion of whose turn it is to go. It seems like over time, I'm not sure it's accurate, but it seems like the accidents have decreased. I don't know if it's people getting used to it, that intersection, I, I just don't know.
Yeah, no, I would agree with that. I do think accidents have decreased over time. You know, I think the improvements made in twenty twenty was a key part of that. Go back to the, to the functionality of the always stop. We would do some geofencing on social media and start pushing messages out about always stops and how to use those always stops, so people, you know, they're scrolling through Facebook, they'll start seeing little ads pop up on how to, how to function. We work with press releases, you know, try to educate. Typically, what we see, you know, there's a break-in period, you know, two or three months, and then, and then it's kind of every day is normal, you know, once people kind of get used to it and, and, you know, how to traverse those.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I do. So, so what is the process? Is, does the state, I mean, I, I know you said, you was asking for a resolution. Does the county and the town have to pass a resolution before the state moves forward on this?
In this situation, yes, we would like for that. Just, you know, we would like to have local support. I mean, we're looking at a project like this, so I have made the presentation to town council and, and to you guys, so would ask for a resolution support, just, but, just to, just to have the, the local buy.
But you don't, I guess my question is, if the state feels like there's a need because of these issues, they don't have to have the support, but you would like to have the support?
Correct.
Okay, I got you. That's all I got.
Go ahead.
Sorry, how did the town receive it?
It was, yeah, received very well, kind of similar questions, but overall, seemed received very well.
I would like to talk about the flashing lights.
Yes. Yeah, so, you know, when, if we moved to an always stop, we would leave the flashing lights up as well. We would change the yellow out to a red, so you also have that as a countermeasure. And given that, I think the statistics have like eighty-seven percent crash reduction factor with that type of scenario. So you would still have that up overhead as well, and it's just not the, the stop sign. We'll do a dual indicated stop sign, we'll be stop sign on each side of the road, or each side of the lane, plus the overhead.
Could you tell us what the metrics are, what those nine metrics are for getting a traffic signal in that area?
I can tell you high level is based on, three of the nine are based on traffic volumes, and the, the peak hours, and then the eight-hour volume, four-hour volume. Pedestrian volume is another aspect. I think there's a school component, and then there's a safety component. When you have so many crashes, so many years, that could be corrected, this one would not fall in that situation. You know, had, had to get back, those are the main ones that we most commonly would look at. And then even, I'll elaborate just a little more. So the, the main, manual uniform traffic control devices, which is a national guidance documents, you know, that's what they listed out for warrants, that's what every state, you know, avoids by.
So what you do today, if you implement the four-way stop today in ten or twenty years, that doesn't stop from changing if traffic gets a lot more, putting in a red light? A red light's the number one topic in this county, right, for that situation down there, and, and we understand you, you've got regulations to go by, but that has nothing to do today for down the road if, if traffic volume really picks up more and growth, you know?
That's correct. Yeah, if, you know, you, a roundabout project can still be submitted every, you know, every iteration of a prioritization process, or, you know, we could go through if, if volumes ever got to warrant it, and, you know, there's a need, you know, definitely can look at that for traffic signal.
I was thinking too, one of those warrants is pedestrian traffic. If, if the freeway does move through there, that may, check one of the marks right there.
Yeah, it could, depending on how, you know, what the volumes are, you know, with always stops, we have seen, we've implemented about four since the first of September, and some are, some of them are in a pedestrian area, and they seem to function very well because, you know, everybody's coming to the stop while, while pedestrians are crossing too. But yeah, you know, depending on the future volumes, for sure.
Is there a trend for more four-way stops? Because it seems like every town you get in anymore's got a lot of them.
There is, yeah. You know, it's, right now, it's one of the things we, we first look at or go to when we have a, you know, a safety issue or safety concern. We did have a, a, a local town just reach out about moving a traffic signal, but not, but not always stop in, and you were probably going forward with that. If you look at some other towns, you know, around this area, outside of this county, but, you know, they kind of went that way too, and, and have received really good feedback from them.
Good. Anybody else, any questions, comments?
Good, thanks.
We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Take this in consideration. Okay, next up, Mr. David Spicer, Senior Operation Project Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. A few things that we have today in administration building, they have installed the battery backup system for dispatch. That went in this weekend, and it's functioning as it's supposed to. So we're, a few things left to tidy up on that, but those things are, the main part of it is up and running, and it's doing what it's supposed to do. The courthouse, you know, we had open house on Friday, so the whole courthouse is complete, and certainly it looks wonderful. We had a good open house Friday. Appreciate all of y'all that were there to be able to come, and the things that was done there, we really, we're really proud of our courthouse and renovation that has taken place there. And EMS, we are looking at some grants. We've, we've received a, a grant from Rowan Gap. They have given us money to purchase some training equipment. We have started our process of getting some training equipment in that we can use still in the process of making our EMS system here in Allegheny County a training center. So we've been able to get already eighteen thousand dollars of that money was spent for different kinds of mannequins and, and different things for training for EMS personnel to make our medical capabilities a little better and to improve the care that we give to our patients and citizens here in Allegheny County. To transfer facility, we didn't have any co-mingle. We did have three loads, four loads of cardboard, which totaled ten point eight, three tons. We had two loads of scrap metal, which totaled eight point nine, six tons. We had two loads of scrap metal, which totaled 8.96 tons, and yielded the county $1,609.40. We have had to have a little bit of work done on our trucks, so today there is some loads going out. We've had to hold some because our truck was being repaired. TRC has us at 60%, so we're looking at a meeting with them this week on Thursday for our committee. So, we need to continue to work on getting that arranged, and this design, this design portion of this is gaining ground, so we're looking at still yet about the middle of January of being able to send the RFP out for that, so we're right on schedule. We're looking at a few grants for the transfer facility, primarily to enhance our recycling. This is something that we've been working towards. April and myself have really worked on this along with Sam Evans. We have come together with some information, so hopefully we're going to be able to get some money in here to help with continuing with our recycling program, which is very much needed in our county. Fire grounds, the lounge club, the veterans park, all of those have been winterized, so those bathrooms are closed off now. All that's been taken care of so that we can avoid, in the colder weather, busted pipes, so all that's good. Animal control portion, we've had five wheel checks, 12 dogs and/or cats picked up. We've had two run at large. We had four that was trapped. A total of 60 hours, 14 calls, and 358 miles traveled, which is a big reduction in the amount of time and miles that was spent in the last few months. So, hopefully that's slacked off a little bit for the holidays, and maybe we won't have as many calls, but we'll see. So that's, that's all of that, and I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Dave?
No, good, thanks.
It was very good. Good crowd of people there that day. All right, Dave, we appreciate it. Next up, April Ham.
Good morning. Just prior to the meeting, I did place a finance report at your chairs, and it does look a little different this morning, so I'm gonna do a little bit more detail in what I have changed about the finance report. Year-to-date revenue, $11,994,362.13. That represents 50% of our approved general fund budget. Year-to-date expenditures, $10,679,199.11. That represents 45% of our approved general fund budget. And then we're about 38% into the approved general fund budget. Bank balance as of this morning, $8,169,538.11 in the checking account, $9,34,016.40 in the savings account, for a total of $17,203,554.51. The town has part of grant savings account for the wastewater treatment plant project. Balance is this morning is $14,454,361.65. And then the two new investments that the board approved about a month ago, those have been invested in the North Carolina Capital Management Trust. For the transfer facility, we have gained $3,168.33 on the 1.5 million that's already been invested. And for the general fund, we have gained $10,561.11 on the 5 million that was invested. And moving forward with these reports, I will put that interest separate so the board can see what's being gained each month. Total funds, $38,171,645.60. And our net financials, taking into account the revenue and expenditures, $1,315,163.12. The bottom portion, excuse me, the bottom portion of the report is the local sales option tax, July through September for this year, $394,568.76, as compared to last year, $380,123.48. So we have an increase of $14,445.28. For the quarter option sales tax, July through September, $110,249.52. For the current year, as compared to last year, $106,362.52, an increase of $3,887. So any questions about that portion of the report? Your second page is an actual, is a spreadsheet of the expenditures representative for the representative of the general fund only. This is your approved budget in the first column, and each department in the description. So just going across the top, governing bodies, the approved budget was $122,380. There's been no amendments to that budget. I have those represented in that second column if there's been an amendment to a department budget. The year-to-date expenses is represented in the next column, and it would be $46,217.04 for governing bodies. And usage is 37.77% in that department. And then you have your balance of what is left. So in the governing bodies, just going straight across, your balance is $76,162.96. And each department that we have set up separately in the general fund is represented on this report for you.
Okay, any questions? Ms. Alman, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. I appreciate April putting this together, and what I wanted to do was be able to give to you and to us a means of looking at each individual department so that if we started to see a department getting a little bit out of line as far as their expenditures at any particular time of the year, that we could get with them and say, what's going on, you know, what's happening here, and see what the explanation is, so that we don't, we can keep our expenditures under control. And I appreciate you putting this together for us.
That's a good point. Anybody got any questions or comments? We appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, next up is myself, we'll talk about a canned food drive to support our food closet. We all know the government got back up and running, but there is still a great need, and we used to do this three or four times a year, back some years back, and I'd like for us to get back on doing it every once or twice, you know, through the winter, a couple times summer. What's the feeling of the board about that?
We've done it for years, it's a good thing.
Good thing.
Especially this year, everybody is, it's a tight year again.
Is that good, does everybody do that?
Yeah.
Canned food drive? The way we've always done it, just set a date, some we could switch off times, you know, commissioners come and go, whatever, and so we want to try to go ahead and set a date or we'll take that up later on to meet. I prefer a date if we could, if we could all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think also something works good, and we sort of lived that out with the government shutdown and the SNAP stuff that we had, that you can, a day you can have, you know, county employees bring in something on a certain day. Sometimes it's easier for that than going to a grocery store and sitting outside, and that's fine too, but I think that's good. Just put it out there and say, hey, we're doing the food drive this week or whatever.
Either way, we could do that.
Mr. Chairman, would you like for us to recommend a date?
Yeah, let's do that.
So we will take a look at the, at the calendar and get back with you if that's okay with you.
That'll work. That'll work. I just think it's a great thing to do. Okay, moving on down, general business. Ms. Rita Miller, Tax Administrator.
Morning. So your packet, you want to have a consent agenda? You have any questions? Otherwise, cancel. If there's no questions, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Full roll.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rita.
Thanks, Rita.
Okay, general business for action. Here's April Ham.
So the first consideration we have for action this morning is actually to reappoint Shirley Richardson to the Tourism Development Authority. As Steve mentioned earlier, she is, her term is up this year, but she is willing to serve.
Good.
And Steve's still here, I think, and, sorry, sorry about that.
So the ask is reinstate Shirley for another term?
Yes.
Shirley Richardson?
I make a motion that we reappoint Shirley Richardson to another term.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to reappoint Shirley. Any other discussion? All in favor? Full roll. Okay, April, go right ahead.
So the next thing I have is actually a $1,000 Walmart grant that the Sheriff's Department received for their fundraiser, run for applause.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Full roll. Ms. Ham, move right on.
Okay. The next thing on the list is actually the adjustment for the United Effort to Keep Mr. Van Hoos and to help with benefits at the chamber. We'll be taking those funds out of the unappropriated fund balance.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the budget amendment.
Got a motion, got a motion here, a second?
Second.
And a second. Garrison, any further discussion? All in favor? Full roll. Okay, April.
Okay, the next budget amendment is actually for DSS. They have received $6,050 in unrestricted donations, and we need to budget that so they will be able to use those donations.
Open floor for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All in favor? Full roll. Okay, April.
Okay. And the last budget amendment was at the table from the last meeting. We have had an increase in our post-65 insurance rates. It is actually, it is going up $80.91 per member per month. And my estimate is for 33 retirees on this insurance, and mostly due to changes in Medicare. Their deductible is going down, and the Part D max out-of-pocket will be $2,100 cap. Tiffany and I did have a couple of conversations with our benefit manager, this is through Blue Cross Blue Shield, and there's nothing any cheaper out there for us to provide what we have comparable for our retirees. I'm sorry.
What's the total of that going to cost us?
The total?
You have that? $80 a month, that's pretty.
The total is going to be $102,960 for 2026. So I did have a conversation with Rita. We have additional Adverlorant tax that have been collected for '22 and '23, and that's the revenue that we would like to use for this year to pay for this. This goes into effect January 1.
Good.
So we're only talking about six months. But we will need to, yeah, we'll, we'll have to have this conversation during budget for next year.
Okay.
We don't have much choice.
We don't have much choice at this point.
It's a heck of an increase, especially when you look at it for the year, but you ain't got no choice, so.
It is, but I will have to say it's gone down like three times. It only went down about $10 per member per month.
Really?
Yes, it had decreased until there was some changes in Medicare. So, the federal level actually initiated some of this increase, unfortunately.
Okay. Open floor for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the budget amendment for the medical insurance.
Got a motion, and motion and a second. Bobby, any discussion? All in favor? Full roll. Okay, April.
Okay, and I believe the last thing I have is a request from Cherokee Fire Department for their relief fund. Board of trustee members, actually Chair Osborne being the fire commissioner assigned to the fire commission, he's done a little bit of research on this. We both kind of split it up and did a little research and had some conversations. But when a fire department does have a resignation or somebody that needs to be replaced on this specific board of trustees for the relief fund for the fire departments, the local government does have to approve those appointments. So they have had a resignation of Jim Lambie and Marky Trickle, and they would like to replace those two with Bruce Montgomery as trustee number three, and the fire chief, David White, as trustee number four on that relief fund board.
Okay.
So moved.
Got a motion, you'll need to, you hear a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor? Full roll, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Mr. Eric Hamilton, District Director, Allegheny Soil and Water.
Morning. I believe in your packet, Lisa has, it's what we call a master agreement from the state for soil and water. My board, chairman signs this, we do one, one year, and then we'll do three amendments for three following years. This has the amount of funds that come back to the county, which I think in this one's $25,214, I believe, comes back for part of my paid position. What this is, an amendment, we, myself and Andrew Cox over in Ash County, New River Soil and Water have worked together. We have a disaster program going on with the state, they've allocated funds, it's $200,000 for three years. We're looking at hiring someone, speaking with Andrew in the river and Ash County, they have agreed to handle all the paperwork, all the money, all the insurance, everything about this person, and Ash and Allegheny will just split it and use them fifty-pickings. So that's what this is about. I can answer any questions you've got, but I'm just kind of a free person, absolutely nothing, no cost. We will have to do a few reports as it says in the master agreement, but they're not going to be extensive reports.
Well, your technical assistant also, she's fixing to have a baby, she's going to be out, so to claim that a little bit.
Miley is pregnant, and she is scheduled to give birth around the end of December, first of January, so I'll be back to the one-person office without this.
This couldn't happen at a better time to help him out in the office, sir.
Like I said, if they're not doing disaster work, which I know Allegheny, we didn't have a huge amount of stuff for disaster EWP and that stuff, I've got a couple sites finished looking at. So, I mean, they'll be able to do cost share work, which is the state program, and then they'll also be able to do strat, the stream.
I'd entertain a motion. So moved. Got a motion?
Second.
Sir.
Oh, any discussion? All in favor? Full roll.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eric, appreciate it. Next up, Ms. Rita Miller and Mr. Brett Jarrett.
Should we have a request to approve a late application for present use value? This application had been filed on January 31st, would have been approved in the tax office as an extension of the bond unit. It was not received by January 31st, therefore it's a late application, and the board can need to hear those requests until December 31st of each year. And Mr. Jarrett would like to present on behalf of the KPD eleven's trust.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners, for this opportunity to present this request today. I'm Brett Jarrett, address- I'm Brett Jarrett, address is five five two nine North Carolina Highway eighteen north. And I come representing my mother-in-law, Peggy Levens, three seventy-one East White History. Her authorization allowing me to speak on her behalf is in your packet. I'm here today to appeal the decision of the tax department to deny our request to include two tracts of properties in Peggy's farm classification. But before going on, I want to commend the tax department on the job they do for our county. Rita, Teresa, and Kelly do an outstanding job and they follow the policies set by this board. And we understand wholeheartedly why they had to deny this request and the prior request a few weeks ago. In reviewing Peggy's farm classifications and land holdings, we found that two tracts that she owns, which are used for the raising of cattle and hay, were not included in her farm designation. We realize that this request goes against the policy of the tax department and we realize this request has passed the deadline. But due to recent actions by this board, precedent has now been set. So we request the same consideration given recently to others and that the deferment of taxes begin in twenty twenty-five. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? This has always been farm use?
It has.
Date has not currently been purchased or anything?
No, sir, she's held this land for years.
Right.
What, what's?
Yes, sir.
What's the total acreage when this is combined with what, what's there now?
She has a hundred and eighty-eight acres in her farm classification and this would be an additional four point one acres.
Is, I think I asked this the last time, is, is she in part of the forestry service on the classification for a tax different, differential?
I don't have to break down of her, of the classification, but I believe most of it is agriculture. There's probably some forestry, but these two tracts are considered an extenuation, an extenuation of the farm unit. So it's agriculture, this is agriculture.
And they physically touch each other?
They do not. The, the farm is of course at Edwards Cross Road. And these two properties, one is behind, as you're going up to the hospital on the left, behind her mother's home. And then the other tract is across from Kraus Park in front of the White House.
Okay.
If, if I may, well, I think we've previously referred to these piggyback onto the, the main P U B track. I think that's probably what we've heard in the past, the terminology used is that it piggybacks onto the main track of the farm.
So as far as the tax department's concerned, it's, it's farm use land?
Yes.
Application deadline just wasn't met at the right time, basically, right?
Correct.
That's, that's where we're at. And like Mr. Jarrett said, predictions were set about a month ago at a meeting here that, that was passed upon.
Yeah.
So.
And I will say we wouldn't be here today if we hadn't seen that.
Here we are. So I'll open the floor, any further discussion?
What's the amount, what's the amount of the release, the release amount was included in the last packet? On the previous track, what's the amount of this release?
I do not have that information.
But just to be clear, it's also considered by the tax department as agricultural land?
Correct.
And the forest service?
It's not forestry.
Well, I mean, it falls under that.
It falls under the present use value.
Yes. Okay.
Any further questions?
Yes, no, I have a question, but these, these that was set here a few years ago, and I know why they did it, for good cause. And I know why they've spelled all this out for this very situation today. And right at the bottom there, can you raise it up a little? Read that right there. Do you mind reading it?
Oh, that's the last paragraph?
Yeah. Specifically stated.
Specifically stated taxpayer neglect, oversight, and lack of awareness of the above described programs of due dates will not constitute good cause for late exemption or exclusion application. The burden of proving both the variable good cause for the late application and eligibility for the requested exemption or exclusion lies with the taxpayer. Late applications must be filed within the calendar year for which the exemption or exclusion would apply.
You're good. Thanks. This doesn't match good cause, just like the other one didn't either, so. And, yeah, that's all I got to say.
Anybody got any other questions?
Yeah, I'd like to ask legal one question, please. Is this board bound by precedent of previous decisions? I mean, what, what are our legal obligations?
No, each, each application or request for a waiver would be individual, so the only thing that would change, you know, what you're bound by would be rules that you adopt, which would change how you would view this, or if state law changed, or, you know, you were implementing something across the board, you know, a new implementation of a tax or something along those lines.
And stemming from that, is the claim that precedence was established carry in merit?
Well, no, only, you know, if, if you looked at it that way, I mean, it's, it's individual, it is up to the board. Any decision for good cause, you know, a taxpayer coming forward to say, we, we think this is good clo- good cause. And certainly it could be based on something that the board had done previously. But it's an individual decision on every single application that would be brought for an exclusion or a waiver. And it's up to the board.
Bobby?
What, what's the age of the landowner? Do you know?
Eighteen.
Okay. I, I just wonder if, if because of the age and the complications of going through the taxes, you know, if that was a problem.
This was not a problem. This was an oversight.
Any other questions?
I, I move that we accept the application.
I second that motion.
Motion to accept in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All against? It's two and two. What's up, Heather?
Doesn't pass.
It doesn't. Right.
Yeah.
Um.
Doesn't pass.
Right.
You can't, you can't move forward on it, so.
Do we have the ability to come back when this call offers in, in session?
You can do it at another meeting, right?
It would have to be brought back up for another review. You know, and you'd have to ask, I don't know if you'd have to reapply. Do you know, Rita, if you'd have to reapply for the exemption because now it's failed?
We, we jump the twenty twenty-five application. So I, I don't know what this that would be that has passed now. We have two more meetings before December thirty-first that would have to be decided by December thirty-first.
So I think it would have to be asked for again, a review, and then brought back for a, a vote.
That needs to be for the first Monday's meeting in December, the, really. Make a decision on it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good. Moving on down, Lisa Ashley, Clerk of the Board.
I want to get your approval on the bids for the surplus vehicles. It was on your desk. The highlighted ones are, those are the highest bids on each of the five vehicles.
Okay, we have that information for us, we just want to wrap this in one motion.
That'd be great.
State are doing individual, let's wrap it in the one. Would entertain a motion to accept.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor? Four oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next up is being Mr. Bill Shepley talking about potential for changing the meeting times. It has been requested that we check into it, look into it, uh, about moving it to about three o'clock in the afternoon, let's do a ten A M.
If the, if the board supports that, we can make that work.
Well, I don't, myself, I don't have a problem with it, I mean, I kind of, you come down here at ten o'clock, it sort of messes up a lot of your day. But as long as it is, and the whole intention is to get our employees to be able to have time to give their reports and, and stuff like that. And I think that would give us two hours from three to five to have a meeting, but what's the rest of the board feel? That's.
I think the board, this board of commissioners and the past board for umpteen years has had two meetings, a daytime meeting, nighttime meeting. That's to give both people that can't make one meeting be able to make the other meeting. Just because one person wants to make this change is no reason, in my opinion, to change the times of the meetings. These daytime meetings allow the county employees to be here without being on overtime or extra pay or whatever. Uh, the nighttime meetings, we try to, for all these years, have been geared towards having, uh, the constituents come in and make their case for what their concerns are. Like I said, as far back as I can remember, twenty, thirty years, it's always been this way. When people run for the board, they know the history of this board. We have two meetings, a daytime meeting, the nighttime meeting. If that doesn't fit their schedule, then they shouldn't run to be a county commissioner. The, uh, changing halfway through the year, this makes no sense to me. So I'm just totally against it.
Good. Anybody else?
I think, I don't, I don't have the problem of the three o'clock, I think, I don't see any issues with it. I mean, I think it might be a good idea to do a trial basis. Maybe six months. Uh, and re, reevaluate it then if we see problems with it. Then we can, you know, discuss it then, but I'm, I'm good with maybe doing it on a, a set of six-month trial basis.
So far as the state statute, it only requi- requires one meeting. It's in the state and, and we're still, we're still, if we move it to three o'clock, we're still in the daytime, daytime meeting timeframe. The state requires one meeting a month and it also requires a public comment section in that meeting and, and counties do various, has various schedule, I know some of them has all daytime meetings, I mean, that's what they do, you know? I like a nighttime, I like a daytime. I think it's fair to the general public and working people don't get off to five o'clock to be able to come and express their thoughts on things. And it's fair to, to do it of a daytime for the employees, the department heads that comes and gives reports all the time, I mean, that's, they, they get it done during the day. It works out good, we're just kind of shifting the time a few hours ahead, but I'm good with a trial run. Would you accept a trial basis?
No. I'm totally against it. Like I say, I just don't, I don't think it serves the general public. And like I said, for the, the history of this county, we've had these meetings, daytime and a nighttime for the last umpteen years.
Anybody else?
Mr. Shepley? Mr. Shepley, do you see any overtime, uh, issues by still having the meeting during the workday and moving it from ten A M. to three P M.?
We would probably have some, it, it would just depend on whether we had a lengthy meeting, you know, we, we would probably have some that would go past five o'clock, but I don't see it as a, a major expenditure.
And Allegheny motion still operates during that window, so if somebody without transportation could still come to the meeting at three P M.
Yes.
Then I see no issue to move forward with it, and I, I really don't think it's about what one person on the board wants, I think it's about what the majority of the board can handle. And doing things the, the way that they've always been done is just a dangerous statement.
Any other questions, comments? I'd open the floor for a motion.
It was this brought up before for discussion?
We talked about it last month ago.
Which meeting?
The month, we didn't have one.
The twentieth.
We didn't have a last meeting, this, this one before mid-month.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. It was, it was talked about. I make a motion to move the time to three o'clock on a six-month trial basis and see where it goes.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Three to one. County managers report.
Yes, David, would you like to give us a building inspections report? Do you have one prepared?
Oh, it is, that's right, yeah.
I'm sorry. Yeah, it's attached for your review, if you have any, uh, questions or comments, you know, let us know.
I don't have any. It's a busy time, I know that.
Absolutely.
Busy time, a lot of building stuff going on.
Yep.
Be good for the county sooner or later. That'll come eventually, okay? Moving on?
Yeah.
Feel free.
Yeah, I've got, I wanted to just, I, um, wanted to just fill you in on, uh, some of the activities and events that have occurred since the last time we've met. So I attended a North Carolina Rural Economic Summit in Hickory, which was really well-attended and very, very beneficial to kind of see how we compare to some of the other rural counties in the, in the area on the different activities that we're involved with. We have been meeting with a group called Civic Plus that, uh, helps us streamline processes for participation in parks and recreation type activities and also with the fairgrounds. We're looking at some software that might be able to help us a little bit with registration and, and marketing for the future. Had another meeting with a U D. Gross from the, the, uh, new Jewish community that is, you know, moving forward in their process. Now, I had a, an invitation to speak to an organization called Allegheny Gentlemen. Um, and it included about thirty individuals. We met at, uh, in the back of the Muddy Creek Restaurant and they just wanted to ask some questions about the county and, and hear a little bit about my background, and so every, every month they have a different speaker come in and speak to them about whatever topic the group is interested in hearing more about. So we had about, that was about an hour and a half long, uh, discussion, very, very, uh, interesting questions that they asked and, um, was glad to have been invited to that. I had an opportunity to attend the Marine Ball, the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Marines, and that was a great event, well-attended. Wes did a great job of conducting that, uh, the event, and, and we had probably hundred and twenty-five people or so, maybe more than that, that were at the event, so it was really good. Had a chance to speak at the Veterans Day Service. Um, with, that was, again, well-attended, there were probably a hundred people at that, that event, we moved it inside because of the cold. And, but it went really well, we had, uh, multiple people speak and, and I was honored with giving the opportunity to, to say a little bit, but I mean, there's nothing, there's no way to thank our veterans enough for what they've done. I mean, they've put their lives on the line for us, they're the foundation of courage and dedication and, and love of our country and, and our count, our state and our county, and, um, I was honored to be invited to speak. I, I was not in any service and so I didn't feel worthy to get up and speak to people that have put their lives on the line, but uh, they still honored me with the opportunity to, to speak, and I, I think it's very important that we all take the time to thank our veterans when we, when we get those chances to do that and make sure they know that their sacrifice is on our mind and, and we think about all those people that couldn't be at these events that have sacrificed, given the ultimate sacrifice, that couldn't be with us. I think that veterans are the greatest heroes in our county. And, um, I was proud to be, have a chance to speak there. Rahel has come on board. Rahel has come on board. It's too bad we could, we couldn't get, work it out to, for you to see her, but she is going to come into town next week, so if some of you have an, an opportunity to stop by and see her, she'll, she'll be here for several days next week, being introduced to people and kind of getting a feel for the area, although she went to school at Appalachian State, so she, she knows western North Carolina well, but she is already off and running. She's, we've had, as I mentioned earlier, we've had multiple meetings with department heads to talk about grant opportunities, and we've got her doing some research already. One of the things she's looking at is grants for the transfer station. So we've already got her, you know, going full speed ahead on that one. I had an opportunity to participate with the Wilkes Community College Board, Advisory Board, and we talked about things that we'd like to see here in Allegheny County, and it was a fruitful, fruitful discussion. We were, the, we had the ribbon cutting at the courthouse, and David and his team, and the architects that worked with us, and did such a great job, and it was, it's beautiful, you know, and it is a centerpiece building in this county. I mean, it's the, it's the most beautiful building in the county, in my opinion, and I think it, it looks, we didn't take away from the, the original intent of the design, you know, we've, I think, just enhanced it, enhanced what already existed there, and and I want to thank Bobby for his input, too, on, you know, some of the things, some of the details that we needed to make sure that we got right so that there was consistency with the past. And that's it. That's what I've got for today.
Thank you, sir.
Been a busy time.
It is. Moving on down, Commissioner comments. I guess we'll start with Timmy here.
Yeah, I just want to circle back and, again, thank the D S S Department of all of their efforts. This time of year gets really busy for them. I know many times they've had people up there all the weekend, they've had children where they had to stay with, and I'm just, you know, a lot of those things that, I guess, when we're going about our work, and most of us don't have to deal with that kind of stuff, and you realize that it is in our county, and there's a lot of needs. So just a shout out to them and all the ladies. I think Stacy runs a, does a tight ship. She does a great job, and also, going, going back to what you said about the, it was really a neat Veterans Day program that we had. We have one, war two veteran that's hundred, what's he, it will be a hundred?
Yeah, it'll be a hundred, yes.
That is still with us?
Yeah, it's still very bright.
Yeah, but yeah, it was really, really a great opportunity to catch up with them and for those people to be honored in our county. Also wanted to, just like all these different things, like talking about the courthouse, the, our transfer station, all the stuff, that we constantly keep good doing and going, and I just want, I know that there's more people behind you guys that work for you guys, but I want to thank David and April, Lisa, and Bill for all of their work, their daily effort. And I guess, other thing is, I won't embarrass Matthew a little bit. Matthew is a homegrown. He is from my family, or my, my nephew, who grew up with my sons, and I got to watch Matthew grow up from a little bitty farmer, him and his brother, never thought he'd ever turn out to be an engineer, but on, you know, it's just really, really makes us proud to know that we have people here from our county that actually knows, like, some of our issues with roads, and I know as an engineer, you go back to a lot of sheets and stuff and statistics and all that, but the point is, you know how to deal with the people, too, because you, you grew up here, and we're really, really proud of you, and we appreciate you coming up and doing this, and trying to work us through all these things, but, and then last but not least is, I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving and enjoy family again, so, thanks.
Same to Timmy. Bobby?
I'd like to mention, I think it's the twenty-ninth of this month, the parade being, be our Christmas parade downtown. Larry, what time? Two o'clock?
Yeah, two o'clock.
Okay.
And then we have the Christmas tree lighting ceremony at five.
So everybody, you know, come out for the parade, it's usually a great, great event. The kids look forward to it, and I think there'll be some candy again this year. Some people like that, some people don't, but we're going to try to give, give out as much candy as possible. Everybody's mentioned the courthouse. I think that was a, a great day for us. Judge Schumate and Judge Dalton spoke, Mr. Shepley spoke, Bill spoke. I think it was a, a very good dedication. It's something that's, that, like, it's been said, it's the cornerstone of our history of this town. Yeah, I think the only thing left is Judge Schumate's office, her house. For whatever reason, almost everything else has been torn down for so-called progress, but if you go to, you go to Woodfall and you look at their side streets, they've maintained those old houses, and it's, it's an attraction. People go there just to, just to go through the town and look at it. Can't go back and change that, it's gone. D S S, this time of year, I mean, they're stressed out ten months out of the year, unbelievably, but this Octo-, it's November, December, they're under so much pressure with, especially with the foster children. It takes a special person to work at D S S. Not many years ago, we had, I think we were down eleven or twelve foster children. Now we're up in the upper forties. I think Stacy said sometimes we push fifty. So, I mean, it's, those people really put in a lot of time, and it's something they just can't leave there, they take it home with them.
Yes.
It's hard for them to forget about it. I guess all of them have a passport, because they go around the world four or five times with the amount of miles that they drive. I, I didn't realize it was that much, but I hope everybody has a, a great Thanksgiving turnout for the parade, and we're looking forward to Christmas. That's it.
Thank you, Bobby. Garrison?
I don't have a whole lot. Thank you, I'll just echo that comment. Thank you to our D S S staff for all you do to keep our kids going here in this holiday season. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody coming up here in the next couple of weeks. One note to point out, filing for commissioner and other election races are going to start in the next couple of weeks, so if you have an interest, keep that on your radar. I think it starts December first or second, something like that, but if you have an interest in running, let's get ready to come out in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Well, I ain't got much to add. Looking forward to getting ready for the canned food drive lined up. I think that's an important thing commissioners need to do and support, and I also want to thank D S S. It takes special kinds of people to do what them gals do over there. It's a, it's a monumental task. I cannot imagine that's an easy job going out, picking up kids and this and that, and having to place them around. That's our thoughts be with them. Courthouse was a great day, and I think one thing that got overlooked that day, and I might have not heard it, but I, all the money that was spent up there did not cost Allegheny County. That was grant money and, and earthquake money, just shy of three million, right, David?
Yes.
So just wanted that to be out there for the folks to understand, and a happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I look forward to that big old turkey. And the parade, as, as Bobby and Larry talked about, parade Saturday the twenty-ninth, two P M., be sure and come out and support that. We look forward, always look forward to having a big parade. Okay, with that being said, we got a request for a closed session, General Statute one four three dash three one eight, three one eight dot eleven, confidential records. Do we need to include anybody? Okay, all righty. Do I hear a motion to?
Motion to go into closed session.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Mr. Evans, we appreciate you guys coming up.
Yeah, thank you.
If you get that four-way stump down there, does that mean we're getting forty-five mile an hour speeding limit back? Point blank, Bobby. I said if you get that.